All right. Give them the call, the reorganizational meeting to order. Before the Pledge of Allegiance, we're gonna do the Oath of Office for Mr. Mullner here. If you wanna stand.
Read this to ya.
I don't know. I think it's just me and him, I don't know. Okay. All right, Derek. "It is an honor that you are elected to guide the education of our community's children. As recite the Oath of Office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you'll be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the Board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the Board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a Board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As Board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the visions of our schools. Furthermore, we must strike to work together with the Superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development." Now you can repeat after me. Having signed the acceptance of oath in office.
Having accepted the oath. Say it again.
That's all right. I did the same thing. Having signed the acceptance of oath, of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of oath and oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I hereby publicly confirm my.
Commitment to the oath of office.
Commitment to the oath of office.
I swear, affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear, affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board.
You say discharge?
Yeah. And that I will discharge faithfully.
I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
Of Independent School District Number 2154.
Of Independent School District 2154.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
That should do it. Sorry for bashing that a little bit. I think that's all that we have to do. Oh, yeah. There you go. You can sign right whenever and get that to Justine.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to 4.0, roll call. Let the record reflect that all members are present. And now on to 5.0, election of Board Officers. 5.0A will be, I'll call for nominations three times. You can nominate anybody at the table, including yourself. And then after that, we will hold a vote. It'll just be by show of hand. Okay. Is there any nominations for the Board Chair? I'll nominate Director Chad.
(Inaudible).
We don't have a second. It's an election. I forgot to mention that, sorry. One nomination for myself. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate, uh, Culture, Bill Addy.
Okay. Bill Addy is also nominated. Are there any other nominations? I'm gonna call three times, just to make sure. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Brandon.
You accept that? Okay, Director Lotiger. There's a nomination for Director Lotiger. Call three more times for, any more? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Okay, hearing none, the nomination period is ended and we will go for a vote. All in favor of.
Should be just an election.
Is this gonna be an election? Okay, yeah. Just say anyone wishing to have myself. Do a raise of hands. Show of hands. Count three votes. All for Director Addy.
We can vote more than once, correct?
Nope.
No. Say it again.
One vote.
One vote.
(Inaudible).
You're out? So you're gonna take back the, both of you are gonna take back your votes?
Yep.
Okay. That's fine. So we'll scratch that from the record. All in favor of Director Lotiger? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four. That would be, now she may assume the duties.
(Inaudible).
Yeah, I'm just gonna move the gavel over to you for this meeting.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, so moving on for Vice Chair. Call for three nominations, or just call three times for nomination.
If I may please, the Board, I would like to suggest that we forego Officer Vice Chair position. To my knowledge, we're the only school district that actually has that, and in lieu of what recently happened this year with our letters and stuff of, you know, when action happens by officers, it creates possible conflict with open meeting laws. I would, I would say maybe it's time to have a school district drop the Vice Chair position.
I think we need to discuss for the next week, I don't think we can make a decision at all on that.
Why? Why can't we have the conversation now?
This is the time when you have it. You're reelected.
Other schools have Vice Chair.
They don't.
Some other schools do, but not.
MSBA doesn't even recognize the position of Vice Chair. When I was Vice Chair and I went down for training, they don't recognize it.
They send them off.
Hmm?
They send them off.
They don't recognize it as an officer position. And that's what I was saying, in lieu of like what happened this year when we had an investigation of an open meeting law violation with officers that signed a piece of paper, our attorney, you know, says that it's not a violation, but the state is in conflict, so being that it's not kind of a standard hierarchy of, you know.
It's creating a majority of the Board.
It's basically what it's doing.
It would give the Board Officer a better chance to.
You know what I'm saying? If you look at face value, that's a quorum of the Board, our officers. That's why most Boards don't have a quorum of the Board. So I would just recommend, you know, for suggestion that we just don't appoint a Vice Chair and then just do the traditional positions as other districts do.
I think Virginia has Culture.
Yeah, they do.
I don't believe they do.
Virginia does. And usually, the way they, the way they, the way they conduct their Board, if you're Vice Chair, you move up.
Well, and that's what most other Boards do. They have a hierarchy. You start on Treasurer, Clerk, and you work your way through.
Right, so if you're Vice Chair, you're.
And they rotate.
You have that, you automatically move up to that.
Right. But I would just say, in lieu of what happened this year, I would just say, I mean, I would suggest that, I mean, we don't create a quorum of officers. That's my logic behind it.
But the Vice Chair really hasn't also, you know, it's just somebody to fill in, whether it is a position.
But we're electing an officer. We're electing an officer. I mean, that's my point, is whether it's a real position or not, we're still, as a Board, electing that position as a formal officer, and it's creating a quorum of the Board. That's all I had to say. I mean, let the Board do what it.
So the concern is legalities? Or is there, the pros are that if Chair is not present, the Vice Chair then can.
Just run.
Otherwise, it would be clerk.
Otherwise, the clerks. The clerks, then still be the delegation.
There's still a hierarchy, yeah, clerk, treasurer, so there's still a hierarchy. Just in lieu of what happened this year, you know, officers are viewed as a quorum of the Board, I just think, well, maybe we should just go. That's my suggestion.
So what do we need to do about that? Do we have to get a motion? Or are we gonna discuss that later again?
Well, you can vote on that.
Well, this is our organizational meeting.
You can make a motion that you do not have a Vice Chair, and if there's a second, you can have a discussion.
Okay, hold on.
And then vote on it. And if the Board votes to continue to have a Vice Chair, then you're gonna elect the Vice Chair.
I mean, to Bill's point, this is the time to have the conversation, 'cause this is our reorganizational meeting.
Okay, so are you wanting to make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion if we have to formally do it that way, to forego electing a Vice Chair.
One second.
That's the way you're supposed to do it, I don't know.
I just figured maybe we wouldn't have one, but I guess if we have to formally go do that.
The motion would be to eliminate.
The Vice Chair position. Okay, motion by Peterson, support by Chad. Any discussion?
I guess I said my piece.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No. No.
I'd have to, I don't agree with that.
You can abstain if you want to.
Abstain, yeah. I'll abstain, 'cause I don't, there's gotta be a function behind that. If a majority of the Boards, from the training that I've received, have a Vice Chair, there's gotta be a function for that, beyond just replacement meeting. But even that alone, the precedence, if we're talking worried about quorum, we shouldn't, we should never have a conversation with the quorum regardless. If you have four officials, if it's four of us, it doesn't have to be officials, any four of us, it's quorum. So if we're following the rules, having a Vice Chair, we should not be worried about having a Vice Chair. It's a good thing.
And you abstain, is what you said?
I'm abstaining.
It doesn't mean you have four. We're abstaining.
Derek is abstaining. Director Addy and Director Genalini are no's, and four you have to.
Nope, okay. Let's bring it back next year.
Okay. All right, moving on to the Clerk position. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Bill Addy for Clerk.
Okay, Bill Addy nominated for Clerk. Any other nominations?
Nominate Mike Peterson. You want?
I'll do it again.
And I'd like to nominate Kelly Sather. Any other nomination? Any other nomination? So we have for Clerk, nomination for Addy, nomination for Sather, and a nomination for Peterson.
May I ask a question? Kelly, would you accept that position as Clerk? Okay. I'll reset my nomination. Okay.
Okay.
Addy and Sather.
Okay, so Addy and Sather. Those in favor of Addy?
Aye. Show your hands.
Three. Those in favor of Sather? Four. Sather is the Clerk. Moving on to Treasurer. Any nominations for Treasurer? I'd like to nominate Bill Addy. Any other nomination? Any other nomination?
I would do it. I'd nominate myself.
Okay, so we have Addy and Peterson. Any other nomination? Okay. All those for Peterson? All those for Addy? So there's five of us for Addy and two for Peterson. Addy is the Treasurer. Moving on to 6.0, Organizational Business. 6.1, we need to designate official depositories.
Madam Chair, these are the two depositories that we have historically used. The Miners National Bank and that one for Special Bank of Gilbert.
So it's a motion to approve that, it's not a motion to choose one or the other? 'Cause we.
Right.
All right. Is there a motion?
And to accept those two banking establishments as our official depositaries.
Excuse me, Mr. Addy. Can I turn my mic, please?
Motion by Addy, second by Sather. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. 6.2, Designate Official Newspaper.
Madam Chair, we have, we have two bids. One of them's from the Hometown Focus for $1.30 per column inch, and the other is for the Masabi Daily News at $1.49 per column inch. Since I've been here, we've tried both papers. They're both fine, acceptable. What you need to understand is $1.30 per square inch in the Hometown Focus is different from a square inch in the Masabi Daily News, as they use different type prints. So it's actually, what we found is it's actually a little cheaper to go to Masabi Daily News, and also it's a daily rather than weekly, as far as publication goes. So I would, I mean, the Board can do it as they will, but I would recommend that we continue with the Masabi Daily News.
Well, what does the Masabi Daily News do for us? I mean, I mean.
We have to, we just have to print all our legal publications, like all of our minutes, the offices, the meetings, and whatnot.
Okay, 'cause I don't get the paper, so.
Huh?
I mean, I don't get the paper, so I just don't.
By law, we have to publish that stuff.
Okay, right.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to designate Masabi Daily News as the official newspaper.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sather, second, or support by Mullner. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. 6.3, Authorize Reopening of Petty Cash Funds. The business office, $500, junior, or the high school office, $250, and the junior high office is $150.
Petty cash funds in these offices are, they aren't used a whole lot, but it authorizes, these are the amounts that have been here since I've been here as Superintendent. But they're, they're basically used to, if we have to go and buy a cake or whatnot, I mean, it's just simple stuff, and then it gets reimbursed.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move. Support.
Okay, motion by Addy, support by Genalini. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. 6.4, Authorize Reestablishing Impress Funds and Signators.
Madam Chair, the Impress Fund is, when we purchase things, like say we ordered, ordered some ink for coffee machines or whatnot, we order it online through a credit card, it gets paid through this Impress Fund, and then when the Board approves that invoice at the Board meeting, that Impress Fund, Impress Fund gets reimbursed. So it's basically a large petty cash fund that allows us to purchase in the office.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Addy, second by Sather. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. 6.5, Authorize Reestablishing an, the Investment Account.
This is primarily our scholarship funds that are in an investment account.
I'll make the motion to authorize the reestablishing of the Investment Account.
Support.
Motion by Sather, second by Genalini. Any discussion?
So when we say, when we say reestablished, we have a previously established investment fund, no changes, altercations to this? We just, we stopped it, and then now we're reestablishing it?
No, every year, the Board just has to authorize a reestablishment of it. It's not that it didn't, it went away or something, it just, if you choose not to reestablish it, then we take that money out and put it in the general fund.
So continuation of it, okay. Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? 6.6, Authorize Spencer Arnie and Janelle Zalantik to set up and, to set up and monitor electronic monthly wire transfers. Electronic wire transfers are presented monthly in the Treasurer's report.
Here's what it says, so.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second. Motion by Addy, second by Lotiger. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 6.7, Authorize Mileage Reimbursement Rates to Coincide with Federal Law.
I'm looking it up right now. $0.54.
I'll make the motion to authorize the mileage reimbursement rates to coincide with federal law, at $0.54.
I'll second that.
Motion by Sather, support by Mullner. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 6.8, Set Board Salaries, currently at $200 a month. Motion?
I'll move.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Addy, second by Sather. Any discussion? Anybody looking for a raise?
Just lost it.
I am wondering though, how long have they been at 200?
Long time.
For information purposes.
It's been a long time, like, a long time.
What do typical women, once everybody else is paying, he'd ask that.
Well, I mean, it's anywhere between, around here, it's anywhere between 200 and 300.
Okay, so we're right in the ballpark?
You're on the bottom end of the ballpark.
Does anybody? I'm fine with that.
Is everybody in favor?
That's fine. Specific duty, you know.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, majority, yes. Peterson, no. Motion passes. 6.9, Designate School District Attorney, currently discretionary for the Chair and the Superintendent.
Previous Boards, Madam Chair, have, have just decided that the Chair and the Superintendent can decide who they want to call, depending on the situation. It has been in the past and has been recommended now that the school district designates an attorney, so that would be up to you guys.
Well, I think our school attorney, I mean, with the talking, or we can't.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion to.
What's that?
Do we need to do the motion, the second, before we have discussions?
No. We're not voting on nothing.
You're not voting on anything, you know what I mean? You can have a discussion and then decide what you're gonna do with it.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, right now, a past Board decided that the Chair and you, depending on the situation, could decide who we want to call.
Okay.
Most schools designate an attorney, I mean, they pick one. You guys can decide.
So when do we designate that attorney?
You can have a, your Chair can open the floor for a discussion on if you want to designate one, or if you wanna keep it the way it is, or, and then you can decide from there.
Okay, so open that discussion.
I think on the January meeting, we never did designate a. From last year.
Last year, you did, no.
And here before that, we called for bids, and we had three different law firms that came in and gave a presentation to the Board.
That was three years ago, I think.
About three years ago.
I mean, I think with the talks with Virginia, you know, we're talking with Virginia, and I do believe the attorney that we have now is, also represents Virginia, but if we're talking about working together in the future, I think that having the same attorney might be a little conflicting interest on the legal part of it. You know, having the same attorney, I mean, represent both, both, you're gonna represent both school districts, you know, I don't think would be, I think that'd be, and it should be put out on bid, you know, and give the presentation, you know, have people come in and give a presentation. I mean, that's how I feel. That's how I thought about it.
So right now, the, right now, we don't have a designated school district attorney, specifically. It's, it's up to the Chair and the Superintendent.
Right.
So, so what we're having to decide is either leaving it that way, or looking for bids to have one designated.
Uh huh. There's over 70 law firms in the state of Minnesota, that, you know, could, we couldn't call for bids, so.
But all 70 of them don't deal with educational law, no.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason why we did that is because, I mean, obviously, we wanna do business local, but there isn't a huge local market for educational law. Like you said, there, I mean, you know, the one, only real one up here represents numerous districts, and then I think the other side of that was that there was other situations that came around, it gave the Chair and Superintendent latitude to call a Duluth attorney or a Twin Cities attorney if so needed, depending on the situation, and it didn't lock us into somebody that might not, you know, was, had limited expertise.
May not be an expert.
Right. Well, I've been, I've been approached by two attorneys that have expressed interest in representing our district. So, I mean.
With experience in educational?
Yes, yes. The last two that came to our Board didn't have any real school background.
No. I just think we should put it out on, I think it's all fairness, it should be out on, it should be just put out on an RFP, you know.
But.
I mean, because, well, how do we know we're not getting our money's worth, or, what, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, we, I think we could save money there possibly. I mean, we can at least look into it to possibly saving money on attorney fees. I mean, at least give it a shot. I mean, you can't.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm just, I'm not real sure how you would write that RFP tool out.
Well, it's been done before, hasn't it?
What's that?
It's been done before, right?
The last time we did it, we invited some local offerings and to throw a pitch at the Board and.
Okay, well, just do that. I've had inquiry due from a local firm that would be interested.
I would like to, I'm sorry, but I would like to go further than local, if we're looking at RFPs.
Uh huh.
I would like to, I mean, I'm sorry, I just, I, I think education law is very specific, and I work with a lot of local attorneys, and I just, it's a very specific field, so I would just like to make sure, if we are gonna look at doing an RFP, which I'm not opposed to, I just wanna really throw it the net wide, to get the best of the best.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think at one point, I did research a little bit, the educational attorneys, and if the MSBA has a list of educational attorney that they recommend, and I don't think any of them are, get any further than north of Duluth. So I guess my, my point is, is to Kelly's concern and possibly the Superintendent's, is if we go the whole RFP route, we might not even, we might RFP ourselves out of even working locally. Does that make sense? Versus if we have latitude to use local for small things and, you know, expand, you know, with the Chair.
But everything is done, I mean, everything is done electronically, you don't really need that person there. I mean, I mean, our school attorney spends half of his winter in Florida, I guess, I mean, he's not really around here, he's gone for most of the time.
I'm just saying, they don't necessarily have to be local.
No, no.
But I'm just saying, I mean, if you wanna spend your money, this school's money locally, I mean, are you saying that you don't want to?
Well, I'd like to, that was Kelly. Kelly wants to go out farther.
Well, I'm saying that, I'm saying for quality of service, yes. Well, I'm saying that, I'm saying for quality of service, yes, I will expand, and when we can spend locally, great, we can spend locally, but I'm sorry, I will not give up quality of service to maintain for local.
And that's, that's my point, is that if we keep it to the chair and superintendent, we can use things local and further, I mean, otherwise, we're gonna be, you know...
We've given up a lot of local services, you know, to hire out, you know, outside the area for our computers and for many other things.
We have a local grocery store, and we don't give them any business, because all the spices in Virginia. We have a local grocery store right here in that one, you have a CoolSnap Technology firm, and we've never given them any business, and they're local right here, pay taxes, IG pays tax.
Tom, what does that have to do with this?
Well, you're talking local.
I know, I understand.
You're talking local, right?
Yes.
You want to keep it local, we don't keep all the business local, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so, to my point.
Are we, are we looking, are we looking, do we need to do a motion, or...
Just tell me what you want to do, and I'll go down.
I need to make that decision?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I don't know, I guess if we've been with the same attorney for a long time, is that true? Have we gone through them for many, many years?
Probably 30 or 40, huh?
But if there's something that comes up with the Virginia, I guess I'm understanding correctly, if something comes up with the collaboration talks with Virginia, we still have that option of going with another attorney, we don't have to stick with them, because we're not designating anybody specific. So going forward, we can still, we can still go through another attorney, even if it's not about the collaboration talk.
Madam Chair, I mean, if I may, currently discretion is the chairs and superintendent, so it's, it can be case-by-case basis.
It is not designated at this point to one specific law firm.
So let's have some more discussion on this before we designate any school attorney. I would prefer that, you know, but it's you and the superintendent that are gonna make that.
I guess I would like to be able to have that luxury of deciding case-by-case, rather than designating somebody specific that may not have educational, you know, background.
I agree.
So what do you, what do you want me to do?
I think that we just stay the way it is and go by a case-by-case, go by a case-by-case situation.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, you don't have to, because that's really the, if you, there's no change, I mean, if you were going to designate somebody, then you would need a motion.
So we're just gonna leave this...
Or we can use any attorney, doesn't necessarily have to be a specific one that's been used in the past.
I'm cool with that.
So I will make a motion to, I don't have to make a motion, okay, we're good. Alright, we're, moving on to 6.10, set school board meeting dates, currently the second and fourth Mondays at 6:00 PM.
I'll move.
I would like to make a motion to move that to 5:00 PM.
Yeah, second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Peterson, and support by Chad to move it to 5:00 PM.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'll discuss about it.
Okay.
If I may, I mean, I mean, the whole, the whole...
I knew it was coming, like...
Well, I mean, the last year, we changed it from, from the way it has been standardly, in the event that we would have more participation from the public, and to be honest, in this last year, we haven't had any new faces, and it's a personal preference for me to be, get it done earlier in the day and spend time with my kids before they go to bed, so that's my true sense of...
My personal preference would be to keep it the same as what it is, because people in the public know what it is now, also works out personally better for me, traveling to and from my employment, but also carting around kids from sports, so I would prefer to keep it the same.
I'll move on that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
There's already a motion and a second, so we're having discussion.
I guess my biggest concern for the discussion piece is, you know, it works nice, you know, I can, time-wise, five, as you guys see me rushing, and, you know, five, I can make work, but it's not necessarily great, but it works nice when we do have these work sessions to be able to have it at five and then have our meeting at six, that's nice. I don't, I don't want to have to come in on a separate date to have a work session, and four o'clock would be really, really hard to make it for a work session.
I mean, to be honest, if we're gonna do a work session, we should have those on our opposite Mondays anyway.
I mean, I'm just, you know, so that would be my one thing, is I like, I don't mind having the work session before the meeting, I mean, that's fine, I just, if we did move our meeting, everything an hour earlier, that would be really difficult.
And there'll be conflict with the student athletes, and ban anything that would go to 5:30, typically, it's 3:30 to 5:30, extracurricular activities, so their participation would be limited, and then the parents, logistically, driving, picking up kids, like...
We had, Madam Chair mentioned, we had full houses last year, too, at five.
The six o'clock is the most, oh, real good, I don't see any reason to change it at all.
So the motion on the table right now, is that, the motion on the table by Peterson, is to change the time to 5:00 PM on the second, second and fourth Monday of the month. So just to clarify, if you vote yes, that means we're changing the time, if you vote no, that means we, we have to have more discussion. So the motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. So five, say no, motion passed.
Motion, okay, motion.
So we need a, we need a motion...
Looks better when I...
No.
To keep it the same.
No, it stays the same.
Stays the same.
Yes, it does.
I gotta get used to that.
I know.
Okay, so it stays the same, second and fourth Mondays at 6:00 PM, we'll be here. Moving on to 7.0, committee appointment.
You gotta take a vote on that, Madam Chair.
Come on.
Because we have to set it.
There was a motion to have a second, fourth Mondays at six. You gotta, you gotta vote on that.
So we do need a motion for, okay, so we need a motion to keep it at the second and fourth Mondays at 6:00 PM, I will make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Lotteger, support by Genalini, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Opposed?
No.
Two no's, five yeses, motion passed. 7.0, committee appointment.
Madam Chair, and the previous chair decided to make all of our committees study sessions, and you certainly can continue doing that, but I thought I'd throw it out there if you wanted to parcel them out instead, that's certainly up to the board's discretion.
Pretty much committee of the whole.
Yep.
Can we get, can we get like a list of these things and just have some signatures of which ones we want to be on, and then we can just resubmit that to you?
That is the list. Huh? That is the list right there.
I know, but...
This is the list of the committees.
What I'm saying is, a past chair decided that all committee meetings would just be study sessions, we didn't have committee appointments necessarily.
With the exception of negotiations and safety.
So, it's up to the board to decide how you, if you want to continue with that practice, or if you want to parcel these out as they are, or whatever you want to do.
I'd prefer to keep it the way we've been doing it, then everybody is knowledgeable on what's going on.
Yeah, and I think, I believe the history of that committee of the whole for all of our committees was because of the facilities, and that's so much of the conversation, everything's intertwined, is that we would all have the same information all the time going forward, and there was no, you know, this wasn't a committee, you know, trying to pass that information on, so.
Speaking of new members, it's been helpful to get up to date on just everything, to be able to hear stuff, so.
So, like, also, A through H is gonna be a committee of the whole?
With the exception of negotiations and probably...
Was there a community education committee at one time, wasn't there, like, community education?
Uh, it probably was, yeah.
I mean, where'd that go? I mean, if I remember it.
Since I've been here, but it could have been, yeah.
Wasn't there, isn't there a community education committee at all?
Not that we had when we came on the board.
I don't think anybody's sat in it.
Okay, 'cause I think community education is, would be a good thing, you know, I mean, it gets the public involved in our school.
That would be nice.
You know, I think that, I mean, that's the first step of maybe trying to do something there to get the, get the public back into our school, to let them know what's going on, or whatever, and offers whatever we can offer, I mean, I'm not too, you know, I just know that when I see the big ad from Virginia, their community education takes up a full page in the Misabi Daily News, and ours is just a little blip, you know, and which consists of walk the hallways, I mean...
Well, I don't know if you, I mean, this topic has come up in the past, and someone long before I got here decided that most of our community funding would go toward a number of things, one, we spend a chunk in early childhood, and the other big chunk is, we're part of, our school is part of a joint recreation board, which is unusual for school districts to be part of that, so we, we, most of what we do is that, I mean, we don't do the, a whole lot of the individual classes, like you said, and, I mean, at any time, you guys can say, we want out of that, and we do something else, but that's how it's set up right now, that's why we don't do a lot of that stuff, because most of that community and money goes there.
I mean, that's through the rec board, if you don't understand that, that's where our, our community ed and our dollars go to the rec board.
Is that legal, or?
Yeah, we're part of a joint board, yeah.
I mean, but if, he's saying if you guys want to take that funding, funding and do it alone, we could pull out of the rec board and do something else.
I mean, as far as, I mean, if you want that big ad on the paper like Virginia has...
Well, I'm just, well, I don't want the big ad. Yeah, I don't want the big ad.
But I mean, if you want all that offerings, I mean, we have to do something different.
Our offerings are through the rec board, basically.
I think it's interesting, though, what you're saying, to even start having the conversation, and start formalizing a conversation about it, would be really nice.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that would be really interesting, and seeing what, I mean, what maybe there's interest in.
I mean, our district, I'm sure has a lot of dollars for the public.
Is there a monetary value to it, I mean, and maybe the interest doesn't need extra money cost to it, and maybe it's something that can be created without that, I mean, but I think the conversation would be interesting to have, so.
I mean, what did they, what did they do 30 years ago for a community at the, you know, in this district, what was, you know, what did they do? I mean, because obviously, it must have just kind of faded away and...
I have no idea when the current arrangement started, but I just know it's been there for a while.
Well, and I mean, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of creative things to maybe think about, we can brainstorm on...
How long's the rec board been around for? There's so many, 30 years since, since we consolidated.
A lot of students participate, they're most...
I just say the rec board's a big deal, too, so that's not, that's not a really, you know, easy conversation to have either, either, because that's a lot of community involvement there.
Yeah, so I'm not saying necessarily pulling any, you know, but I'm thinking...
I mean, but what does the rec board encompass, everything recreational, right? I mean, from basketball to badminton, or, I mean...
All the youth sports, yeah.
I mean, but, I mean, is there, like, art class, or, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, like, you know, a ceramics class for the public, or, I mean...
They, they do not do that, that's all, the rec board is, to my knowledge, and I'm not a part of them, but it's all youth sports.
Okay.
Fight football.
Yeah.
Introducing kids to sports. Okay, so what do we, what do we want to do about negotiations being where, still in negotiations?
Well, we, being that we are currently in negotiation, you can't really change teams midstream, so it is what it is until the next round comes.
I, I, are you probably looking at changing negotiations as a committee of the whole because?
No, we can't.
No, no, safety and...
So we'll just remain?
I think, I think negotiation should be the only one that's, that should be, you know, everything else should be a committee of the whole, except for that, for the, you know, except for negotiations, and everything else would be...
I'm good with that.
That's fine, go ahead.
Do I need a motion for that?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on.
So now we're done with that part, so we have to, we have to move into the regular meeting, and we've already done the pledge of allegiance, you can redo the roll call and then start from there. Just slap the gavel and say you're gonna start.
Of course, okay, calling the meeting to order, we already did the pledge, so moving on to the roll call, let the roll call reflect that all members are present. 4.0, student representative information, she's been waiting a long time.
So this week, we're gonna be having our blood drive, if you are 16 years or older, you are advised to go see our Spanish teacher, Señorita Arson, where she has all the information on this, and she was very helpful with helping with this. Our One Act is leaving Sunday, the 14th, to go to Saw Rapids for our MLK One Act, they'll be gone Sunday and Monday. Friday, January 19th is the end of the semester, and January 20th, at 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM, preview of Plays Festival at EGHS for our One Act again. On the 9th of January, we have boys swimming, and that's a dual meet in Proctor, boys basketball at home versus South Ridge, girls basketball away versus Moose Lake Willow River. On the 11th, it is a ski team away meet at Cook, girls hockey at home at the Hip versus Superior, and girls basketball at home versus International Falls. On the 12th, we have boys basketball away at Deer River, and on the 13th, boys hockey at home at the Hippodrome versus Princeton, and girls hockey at home in Hoyt Lakes versus Park Rapids. And that is all.
Thank you, Haley.
Thank you.
Moving on, 5.0, agenda additions and deletions.
I just have one, Madam Chair, if you look at the last part of the wellness policy that we passed back in December, we did have a review by the USDA, not so long ago, and they, they told us that that highlighted sentence needs to be part of, that the all foods and beverages advertised on campus will meet the smart snacks, so, but the rest of the policy, they said was good, but we didn't need to add that one sentence, so that's the only thing.
I don't need to do that, anything with that?
Well, that will be 12.8.
12.6?
12.8. 12.7 to set a closed session. You probably grabbed the one out of your packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Oh, you're on the end. Me and Justine just went clicking this last, last week, because got off vacation, I'm gonna blame her, can I blame you? Alright.
She'll take care of you later.
Okay, that's the only thing?
Yep.
6.0 visitor input, has anybody signed up? Okay, 7.0, approve the agenda. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Sather, support by Mulner, any discussion? All of those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the treasurer's report for the second check writing of December, the month of December, and the first check writing of January.
Okay, without getting into reading all the numbers, I just make the motion that the board approved the first check writing of, of January.
Does he need to read the numbers?
No.
He can do whatever he wants.
I'll get, yeah, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get to that, I mean, he's got a, I've listened to Tom for a year, okay, but...
Okay, so are you making a motion?
That you approved, that this board approved the treasurer's report for the first check writing of January.
And not the second check writing of December?
Or, oh, wait a second.
And the whole month of December, right?
Hang on. Okay, well, I'll make a motion. Got him? Got him? Okay. Yeah, okay, that'd be the, that'd be the, okay, I make a motion that this board approved the second check writing of December of 2017.
Plus the first writing of January.
Plus the first writing of January.
And the month of December.
And the month of December.
And the month of December, yes.
I will second that.
Okay, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, I'm just stumbling a little bit.
Motion by Addy, support by Sather. He'd like that back. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 9.0, consent agenda. 9.1, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, December 11th, 2017. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 11th, December 11th, 2017.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Sather, support by Chad. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 10.0, nothing was removed from the consent agenda. 11.0, personnel. 11.1, approve Sarah Finley for ECSE, her professional and early childhood aid appointment.
Madam Chair, Sarah Finley is currently working for us, correct? This is a job change for her, an internal move. What was she doing before? She was in, all right, so she was in the lunchroom in detention and now she's going to move to this position, which is a split position, 11 hours on one side and 11 and 10 on the other. So, then we'll have to find a new luncheon in detention for that.
So, are you going to need to post, to approve a posting for that as well?
That is not a union position, so no, we don't need to approve a posting.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Addy, support by Chad. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. With the minutes reflect that, Director Chad, leaving. Act 653. 12.0, new business. 12.1, approve the 2017, 2018 certified seniority list.
Madam Chair, the certified seniority list is all of the teachers, all the people that have certification. The next one, Title I, is they are also certified, however, they're in a different classification being that they're title teachers, they're hourly. Then the final one is the same deal, they're certified, however, they are on a separate list because they're in a different part of the contract. So, all three of these, 12.1, 12.3 are on the same Minnesota contract, they're just in different sections. And for, just for the sake of the new members, these lists do go out in December. Members are, have the ability to look at it and contest whether or not they agree on that higher date. Once that period has come and gone, then the board certifies it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the certified seniority list. I will second.
Support.
A motion by Sather, support by Lotteger. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. 12.2, approve the 2017, 2018 Title I seniority list.
I'll make a motion to approve the Title I seniority list.
Support.
Motion by Sather, support by Genalini. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 12.3, approve 2017, 2018 early childhood seniority list. I will make a motion to approve the early childhood seniority list. Support. Motion by Lotteger, support by Sather. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 12.4, discussion on ACT testing.
Madam Chair, I'm going to read on Ms. Williams a little bit here, but I'll, I'll set it up. So, I don't know, about three years ago, the state made it mandatory that we allow all juniors or have all juniors do the ACT test at school. This past year now, it isn't mandatory anymore. It still is mandatory?
No, it's not mandatory.
It's not mandatory?
It wasn't mandatory either.
Okay.
But it was free.
I'll let you just take over. It's not free anymore, so this is where you guys come in.
So, at one, at one point, the Minnesota Department of Education required that every student in 11th grade take the ACT, whether they're going college route or not, everybody had to take it. They paid for it. Then the next year, they still paid for it, but it was optional for 11th grade students to take it, so that was last year. Now, this year, it's still optional for 11th graders to take it. We have to provide an opportunity for the kids to test on site, but they have, now they're, we're going to be charged for it. So, do we want to charge the students? It's about $61.50 to, for each ACT test, except for if you're free and reduced, then if you're free and reduced, then it, there's no cost to it and the state will pick up the fee for free and reduced kids. So, of our 11th grade students, do we want to pick up that tab of the $61.50 or do we want to charge the students? I did reach out to four other area principals. Two school districts are going to be charging their students, two school districts are not going to be charging their students. So, that's what's up for discussion. Do we want to charge the kids to take it? And again, it would only be the students that don't qualify for free and reduced that would, would have to pay $61.50.
And it's just the students that are choosing to take the ACT?
Right.
So, what, what are the numbers, do you think, on how many actually?
Well, in, in 11th grade, we have about 70 some students, so I would say, I, I don't know the number of students that are free and reduced, I'm not privy to that information, so I really can't guess how many students there are free and reduced.
Do we know how many students last year took the ACT out of the 11th grade?
I don't, it was free last year and I'm not exactly sure. I think Mr. Philsbury did.
Because last year was optional for them.
It was optional.
I know it was free, but it was optional. So, I just wonder how many chose to take it last year, the number.
Yeah, I know we encouraged it, like Mr. Philsbury.
I think most of them last year took it because we knew they weren't, they weren't, they weren't getting charged for it, so why was we doing it anyway? We just, you know, we'll give it a try.
They chose to do it because it's free. Did we have any cases where there's an individual that their teachers were surprised at how well they did and maybe they wouldn't have taken it? Was there, by chance?
Not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware of.
Because that's, that's the incentive. If we cover someone who might be down and out on education, goes and picks ACT and all of a sudden he has, he or she has a free ride or gets a Bernays grant or, so that's a good thing, but also.
Just running a little calculator here, so if every junior took it, none of them were free and reduced, about $400.
We got to cash it.
Yeah, we pay it.
Yeah, pay it.
Okay.
Okay. Can I make a motion to cover the ACT cost for juniors that are choosing to take the test this year?
I will second. Motion by Sather, second by Lotteger. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 12.5, approve the 2018 Rams membership.
For those of you who aren't familiar with Rams, it's a range association of municipalities and schools, they're a lobby group comprised of towns, townships and schools. They do have a membership cost to belong to them. We have historically been a part of them. The RFP is unchanged at $1,250. The board so chooses to continue, they can.
I make a motion, we stay with Rams.
Support. Motion by Addy, support by Sather. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 12.6, approve the quote to replace the security system.
All right, so we've had the discussion. We had a lightning strike last summer, kind of took out our, part of our security system that was creating some havoc. We brought in numerous, well, the company that installed it and some others to, to try to fix it. And in the end, the insurance company told us that they weren't interested in spending any more money on having someone try to fix it, just to replace it. So, we, we had, we brought ARI in and Dave has been patiently waiting for the last hour back there, maybe more, to draw an RFP up for, for some companies to bid to replace the system. I have Dave here, if you need, if you, you can talk to it a little bit, but my understanding, Dave, is that we're replacing basically the door fob security system. Plus, this also includes the buzzers on door three and four.
Yes, we're adding.
Do you want me to just stand up?
Kind of give us the scope of work, or scope of your work that you'll be doing.
So, we put out the plans and specifications and received the quotes that you have in, in front of you. And so, the scope of work was to replace the access control system throughout the building, so all the card swipes would be replaced and provide new cards. And then, we also replaced the security system in the building, so that's the motion detectors that are near all of the entries. So, that system would be replaced. And then, there was an addition of buzzers at the front door and the door by the pool to, so that the school can remain locked down during the day and if somebody comes to the school, they can push a, a button and they can communicate with the person in the office. And actually, we have four office stations that were selected. And so, all, they would ring and whatever order their program to ring in and then you would have visual and voice communication with that person at the door and then you can buzz them in or not.
So, the, what we don't know, what, do you remember what the cost on that portion of it was?
The entire project was $55,195 if you award it to the roll bid.
Right. Do we, do you remember what the buzzer part is, though?
I didn't get a break out of the buzzer yet.
It wasn't a buzzer, okay. So, I'm, the only caveat here is the insurance company might say, yeah, we're, we'll pay for what was broken, but we might not pay for the buzzer system. I don't know that the, so, the two buzz, the two door buzzers might be a separate item, might be, I don't know.
We didn't know what that cost was?
He says he didn't have that broken, obviously.
Break it out.
So, the, the insurance company will probably pay for?
Most of it.
The $55,195, right?
Well.
The buzzers is included in it. The most of that.
Will the, okay, and then you get, and you guys get like 8%, right? So, is this 8% added to that?
We already paid their bill.
Okay.
This is, that 55 is, that's, that's what.
Installation.
That's for the installation equipment of the security system.
I think the point is, is that this is an insurance covered. It's not our funding minus the, minus the potential of the door buzzer thing, but what we, what we had closed session conversations about.
But what will they just cover? I mean, will they cover the 8%? The ARI or, I mean, or what is he going to, I mean?
They're covering all that. The only thing that's in question right now is the door buzzer.
Okay, right.
But I don't know how much it costs.
I think that's a necessity.
And that's, and that's my point, is that regardless what the cost is, we, we have to address that.
Yeah.
What we, what we discussed in a closed session, so.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to go with one company or the other?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion?
My, my recommendation would be to go with Andreessen there, the little better.
What was the, why was there such a price difference in the two? I mean, what was, why was one, I mean, why was there such a?
Perfect tone.
Well, Procter, I mean, they're right next to each other. Forrest Thomas wrote German to Procter, I mean, that's right in each other's backyard, basically.
I'm, I'm guessing one, the completion time is 45 days, the other one is making a priority and is 20 days.
So, you think the, the price was increased because of the urgency to get it done?
Different companies have different margins.
I was just going to say, yeah.
I mean.
I mean, I just didn't know if we were getting different, different equipment or different, maybe a different?
The equipment was spec'd by, by ARI, so.
Okay, that's what the RFP is, yeah.
We provided a plan and specification for the contractors and, and actually did a walkthrough with both of them and with an electrician that both of them were interested in working with. Hometown Electric walked through, so we walked the entire project and they had the same plans and specifications, so I'm not really sure what the difference was, but, so the equipment was going to be exactly the same from, from both and both of them were qualified vendors to install that equipment.
Okay, so it was like for like, but just that the price is different on the?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
I will make a motion to accept the bid for the Andreessen Sun Company for $55,195 replacing the security system with knowing that there may be some money that insurance is not going to be covering for the buzzer systems and allowing administration to go ahead and still purchase that with the appropriate funds needed.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the lowest bid, knowing that the insurance may not cover the full cost and to go forward regardless.
Do we know what pers, I mean, I know, I wish, I wish the insurance guy was here, but we know what possibly a percentage of what they might not cover?
It's the two door buzzers, which, I don't know, can you give me a guess, Dave?
Can't say that it'll be more, highly unlikely that it would be more than $10,000 for the door buzzers.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second? I will support. Motion by Sather, support by Lotteger. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 12.7, set closed, discuss, closed session to discuss negotiation strategies.
Thanks, Dave.
Need a motion for that?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second proposed, maybe.
Motion by Sather, support by Molner. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We've got the 12.8 addition regarding the wording of the nutrition policy or wording?
We're just changing a sen, we're adding a sentence to the wellness policy.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the additional sentence in the policy, in the wellness policy.
I'll second.
Support by Lotteger, support by Addy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. 13.0, administrative reports and information.
Come on, it wasn't that bad, guys, was it? I haven't even started it. You guys get extra credit for staying through this.
I think Dylan's contemplating making a sneaky exit.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll try to go through this pretty quick. So, anyway, at the moment, we're still at 9:30. That's the last two times we've met, that's where we're hanging out. A little recognition, you want to go ahead, Ms. Williams?
Yes, Melissa Betsch was recognized by the, as the Innovative Educator Award and this is put on by VISA. Every month, VISA will select somebody who is. Every month, VISA will select somebody who is teaching personal finance skills in a class, so Melissa Betzel was nominated, and she was selected for her personal finance class and some of the activities that she does in that class, so it was a nice recognition for her, and congratulations to her.
Just wanted to point out, if you haven't noticed already, we, we finally got the redesign on our website. It's up and running as of January 2nd, so give that a look. I talked, uh, a meeting or two ago about smart boards, we've, we've had a couple of demos in, we recently had, we talked about the, the Smartboard 7000 series that we, that I had discussed before. We had one of those in, in-house for about two weeks, and the reviews are, are pretty good, the visuals are, are great, these are views, pretty cool. So, we're, uh, we're actually gonna buy one, so that I can get more people to try it out before we make a decision. It's, it is a pretty, uh, large investment for, for the school district, if we decide to go that way, and we'll definitely bring that in front of the board, so you guys can see what, what we're talking about. Uh, the other one that I talked about is the Juno system, we've, we've been talking about replacing the, the, uh, audio, the student, or classroom audio, PA system type deal. This one, the Juno system, uh, covers both those areas, um, it's also Bluetooth speaker for, for all of our equipment. We currently have, uh, we're getting quotes on that, and that would actually be paid for through Safe School money, because it would, we could, uh, it's considered part of the PA system, so it's, uh, could be a safety item, so. Looking at that, we'll, we'll get you a demo on that, but I just wanted to keep you updated on where we're at with that. We did have the company come through the building today to look at individual, because we, you can't put, obviously, one of these out in the hall, so some of the existing system speakers will still be used, wiring and whatnot. You wanna talk a little bit about staff development?
Uh, our current staff development is very, I guess, I'm pleased with the way things are going with, with that. Our five through 12, um, teachers, staff are focused on student-centered learning with rigor. They've been meeting by a subject level every other week, as of late, for their professional learning communities, and then the opposite weeks, we would have interdisciplinary or mixed group PLCs, and, um, with that, the, that work continues and is cyclical, they, they really mean some positive growth there. Do you understand anything about K4, Mr. Currie?
No.
Okay. They're working on-
No, I'm just kidding. We're, uh, last couple times, we've, uh, we've been working on some team-building things in, in K4, but we're working on mainly alignment of our standards of the curriculum in math and reading, and, and we expanded it into science and, and, uh, social studies. Uh, we haven't, those are two areas that we haven't looked at in K4 for a really long time, so we're trying to get up to 2017 in, in that area, so, anything else?
I just wanted to comment, too, that we have a K through 12 leadership team, and Tim Strasser has been volunteering, Jill Clennan and Melissa Lotteger, so we have one rep from each building. And last Friday, we met with, with that group on Friday afternoon, just to plan out, you know, future staff development. We wanna make sure that the teachers have a say in what they're doing, and we've been sending out a lot of surveys. I know one just went out about, to all the teachers, a survey that I think Jill Clennan and Tim Strasser put out, just asking the teachers, what do they feel like they need to work on for the rest of these early releases that we have? So, we've been getting teacher feedback, which is good, important.
Are you getting feedbacks specifically on whether they're feeling it's productive or not yet?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Yep, we've, uh, we've had some really good Wednesdays, we've, we've had a couple eggs here and there.
Mostly really good.
It's been more good than bad. I think, you know, we've been trying to, most of the structured stuff, when we're actually teaching them something, say, there's a computer program or whatnot, I mean, that, that stuff has been good. When we try to go with the, the PLCs, professional learning communities, and it's a little less structured, and there are only three of us, so we can't be in, in all of those rooms, it's, that's been a little more mixed, because it's not quite so structured. So, we're, those are the kinds of things that we're trying to work on, and how we're gonna fix that part of it. So, that's been good, though. It's been a great opportunity for, we've done a lot of good things in Wednesday.
Well, and I'd just like to make a comment, you know, it's just exciting to hear the teachers, when they talk about, like, the science department on the subject level ones, when they meet, they're taking a look at their assessments that they have for their students, and they're trying to make it more rigorous, where they're asking not just the fact, not recall questions, but really trying to get them to think more, so it's just exciting to see that the teachers are working on assessments, and that they have a common goal, and it's exciting to hear about.
Alright, a little bit on collaboration, so we're gonna meet out on January 29th. Three things on the agenda for that night, transportation, I've been bugging that guy, make sure that that thing's done. We have the extracurricular survey has gone out, and it's completed, and getting pretty close to the three of us, and, and Dr. Schmidt, and, and we invited a, a company in to talk about that, and I think we're, I felt it was pretty good that last time, and I think we have a pretty good plan for, for how that's gonna, that could possibly happen, and feeling pretty good about that, and we've, uh, we've talked as, on Wednesday, we've spent some time talking about what we saw in Alexandria, and, and what that could lead to, and, and there's lots of, lots of excitement amongst the staff even. Certainly, it's scary, change is scary, but lots of excitement about the possibilities to do anything, good things for students, so, so moving in the right direction there. Uh, a little bit, uh, we haven't been at school a whole lot, too, so I had to take from the last week, but we had, we had a Santa and Mrs. Bosch showed up at Franklin and went to all the classrooms, and it was, he was great, I mean, he was really fired up about it, mostly on Friday, and was hanging out there. Then, also another exciting thing, the U.S. men's curling team came here and visited on the Eagle Campus, and kids are pretty fired up about it, yeah.
And on that, uh, U.S. curling team, when they did come, Melissa Lotteger had her fourth graders make a big, huge welcome sign, you know, so that was nice that they did that, and then they had flags that they found in the basement, these little U.S. flags, so they all, all the elementary came in with the flags, and they were super excited, and our high school students were there, of course, nine through 12. And then, the coach, Phil Drofnick, did give each school building, um, one of their curling shirts with everybody's signature on there, so everybody's, yeah, signatures on there, so each building received one of these.
Just a little side note, when we, uh, when we went in the basement, we found the box of American flags, there were only 48 stars on the flags, so nobody-
Is that how old they were?
No, it's how old this school is, that's it. Nobody noticed, so.
No one noticed.
Alright, go ahead.
Moving on, some things going on at Gilbert Campus, our, I've been a little more active in the preschool threes classrooms this year, because my son is one of the classes, but anyway, um, here's some photos I took of, of some of their artwork and their work that they're learning, learning their names, and also decorating and building their snowmen, so it's, uh, hard to see in the pictures, but my son's picture is actually in there, so. Moving on, into the industrial tech area, the seventh grade had one section of industrial tech first semester, and then moved into three sections the second semester, but a couple of the projects that, that were shown there, mostly projects are, went home with the kids already, but there was a couple left behind here, and you can see they're making candle obers, or bookends, or however you want to use those. And then, over in the band music department, I took some photos of Mr. Schubel, he was teaching the sixth grade students how to sit in their chairs, either front of your chair with your back straight, or back of your chair, and you could actually use the backrest, and he was demonstrating that for the students, and they were all participating today, so. Thank you.
And at the senior high, we had Quinn Mewich win at the local level and the district level, um, the VFW Voice of Democracy essay contest, and Mrs. Walls, every year, has her students complete this essay contest, and it was nice to have not only a local, but a district level, and he moves on to the state title, and anybody who makes it to the district level, all of those students in the state of, state of Minnesota get to go and be honored, and on January 20th, at the Minneapolis Marriott City Center, and will hopefully, that Quinn's essay will move on, and he'll own the state title, so good luck to Quinn on that. And then, before Christmas break, our, Mrs. Forsman, our choir teacher, took the concert choir members, and then the eighth grade choir members caroling. She visited many different nursing homes and places, but this is one of the Virginia Carefree Living Nursing Home that they were at.
I just wanted to give you a little, uh, we've talked about the MSB training, and we, Victor Peterson alluded to it earlier, but I'll, I'll contact the reps, so, and we're back in, back in the swing, and, and we'll start that process rolling, and just a reminder that January 29th is, is coming, and then I also, uh, probably have another one, another study session that I don't have a date for right now, but I do wanna, once we get the quotes on the smart boards and, and Juno system, I wanna go through that stuff with you guys in a study session, and see if we can make a decision about what we wanna do with that, and then, as well, after January 29th, um, I'm gonna invite a, uh, I'm gonna invite some folks in to start talking about setting goals for what our priorities are in February, and we can start that conversation, see where it goes, so, that's all I have.
Do we know, Jeff, do we know when we're gonna be heading down, possibly heading down to Alexandria again?
Um, the January, they, they do one a month, the January date was full right after we got back, they were already full, and Dr. Schmidt was working on getting us in, in in February, the February date, which is the end of February. So, we have, uh, we've contacted, uh, the Laurentian Chamber to try to get a feel for some business folks that we might wanna bring with us that, that night, um, just to get a number, so that when we call down there, we confirm that up, but we wanna start bringing some of those folks with, uh, just to, if we can get a handful down there, um, we're also looking at some representatives from the tech school over here, Bill Mackey, the president of, of NIH, is, we're looking at either him or the provost coming with us, get them involved, uh, Roy Smith from ARI, getting him down there, he's actually been there before, but, um, but he also, he's got a pretty important position at the ExRFP, so, I mean, we're, oh my goodness. So, anyway, that, that's kinda what we're planning for the next trip, is to get some of those folks involved, and-
How about students and parents?
Students, staff, and parents, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody in mind to go down there, or any staff, or students?
I think staff, as far as teachers go, I think we're, we're good on that, as far as spots go, but, I mean, if we had another board member or two that, that are not familiar, that wanted to go, we should probably do that, because you guys are ultimately making that decision.
It would be a good opportunity for you to go there.
Yep.
And, uh, yeah, so, and we would like to get some students down there. Honestly, last time, when, when we talked about it, I was a little nervous about that, I was thinking about asking your kids if you wanted to go, um, but, yeah, Virginia got away, so let's do it, too. But, that's all, yeah.
So, do we just take a brief recess?
We're gonna take a brief recess, and then we'll go into closed session.
Taking a brief recess, brief recess.